We just need a second then.
I'll second.
Seconded by Regal. We'll start with President, motion by Pipcorn, seconded by Regal. To nominate, please leader, President, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. So I'm just gonna go through each one of these, right? Okay, Vice President, that would be, uh, is there a motion to nominate and to approve Dennis Pipcorn?
I thought we were gonna leave it all the same.
So we're not gonna go through each one of these? I know, that's what I'm trying to do.
I got, all I gotta do is read them off.
No, I gotta, I need a motion to, you as Vice President.
Uh, we already, okay.
You can't.
No, you can't.
Yeah, you can.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Regal, seconded by Lally. To nominate and approve Dennis Pipcorn for Vice President, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Alright, next up is the Clerk, which would be Kathy. Need a motion to nominate and approve Kathy as the Clerk. Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Seibert. To nominate Kathy Lundgren. For Clerk correspondent, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose, motions carried. Now we need the Treasurer, uh, to nominate and approve Wendy Wosnick.
So moved.
Motion by Lally, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Seibert. To nominate Wendy Wosnick. For Treasurer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Okay, now we have the WASB delegate that passed, that's been Dennis. I need a motion to then, um, nominate and approve Dennis to be the WASB delegate.
So moved.
Motion by Lally, is there a second? Wosnick. To nominate and approve Dennis Pipcorn. For WASB delegate, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. CISA eight.
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Mr. Lally.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Pipcorn.
You're welcome.
Seconded by Wosnick. To nominate Dave Lally. Are there any other nominations for CISA eight? If not, I need a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot.
So moved.
Okay, first we have to go, motion by Pipcorn, seconded by Wosnick to nominate Dave Lally, CISA eight, Board of Control, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Six, six oh and one.
Gotta be that way, don't ya?
What word for?
I know.
Okay, I need a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Dave Lally. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Regal, is there a second? Seconded by Pipcorn to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Dave Lally, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carried, six oh and one. Okay, that takes us to committee assignments. Currently, we have three committees, we have the Finance Committee, which does negotiations, budgets, personnel. You have the Administrative Committee, Administration Committee, which is curriculum, community education, and policies. And more policies. And then you have Property and Transportation, which is buildings and grounds, transportation, and technology. The Board President is on all three committees. Did we wanna change anything on the committees from last year?
Your white binder, yellow sheet, so you know which committees you are on or who others are on.
Yellow tab, yellow sheet.
Yellow's right in the front, sprite yellow. You might have your, your plan, your COVID plan first, and then your yellow right on the sheet.
Okay. Alright, currently the Finance is myself, Lally, and Seibert. Administration is Lundgren, Wosnick, and myself. Property and Transportation is Pipcorn, myself, and Regal. That's what their, uh, the committees are currently set as. Does anybody want to request a change? No? If not, I need a motion to leave the committees as they are.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lundgren, seconded by Dave Lally. It's gonna take a second here. To, how do you wanna word that Kathy?
Motion by Lundgren, seconded by Lally, like you said, to leave committee assignments.
As is.
As is.
Committee assignments as is, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Alright, designation of official depository?
Right now, right now we have Pesticco National Bank, and we also have any W Credit Union as our official bank, so... I'm asking that we just, we just changed over, I'm asking that we stay with those branches.
Okay. Any questions or comments, if not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wosnick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lundgren, to designate Pesticco National Bank. And any W Credit Union as the official depositaries for the Surin Public School District, all in favor say aye. Pose, motions carried. Letter D, designation of official district newspaper.
I'm just looking to ask, to continue with the Pesticco Times as our official newspaper, and we've talked about that prior, they post everything that we have sent to them, so we wanna continue that relationship.
Any questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Regal. To designate the Pesticco Times as the official newspaper for the Surin Public School District, all in favor say aye. Pose, motions carried. Date, time, and place of regular meetings.
Our meetings are always the second Wednesday of the month, and if we had a meeting and another meeting would be the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Alright. Do we wanna change the time, at one time it used to be six o'clock, but then you stay later.
Like midnight?
Could change it to five o'clock, I mean, it's up to you guys, make it the same.
Five thirty.
Does it sound good, five thirty? Alright, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Lally, seconded by Pipcorn. To hold regular monthly meetings on the second Wednesday of the month at five thirty PM in the boardroom. If needed, the second meeting to be held on the fourth Wednesday of the month, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Alright, we have number four, which is, uh, consent items. These are items we really don't discuss unless, um, somebody wants to pull one of these off the consent, consent agenda. But, uh, first of all, we have, um, approval of agenda, are there any changes in sequence or removal of items?
I would like to move letter M on your matters requiring board action, which has to do with the Hall of Fame recipient into executive, executive session.
Okay. And we would probably come out of executive session.
Yeah.
With the decision on, okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's the only change.
Alright, we also have approval of minutes for the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Approval of bills, check numbers ninety-six, three seventy-seven through ninety-six, four, five, six. And approval of the Treasurer's report. Any questions, comments on the bills, or, uh, anything on the consent agenda, if not, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Seibert. To approve consented, consent items, agenda, minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Bills ninety-six, three seventy-seven through ninety-six, four, five, six. Treasurer's report as listed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Questions and comments from the public, if, um, you have anything you wanna bring up to, um, the Board? Uh, just, uh, come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and then what town you're from? So there's a five-minute limit, so. Go ahead, Lynn.
You mostly know me, I'm Lynn Kruegermecker. Um, I live on three, three, four and a half street in Surin. Um, my dad actually is the property owner, but I will be also getting on the title shortly. Um, we're looking to purchase land behind the house, it was offered years ago. I moved there in two thousand and ten, um, so prior to that it was offered, so I didn't get that opportunity to buy it at that time, my dad. So, it's, I don't know what to say, we feel very, very limited in space. I gave you a couple pictures of what we're dealing with as far as our fence line, um... When we first purchased it, it was an eighty, we were told it was, um, eighty by one sixty. We just got it resurveyed and we went to eighty by one twenty. So when we first bought the property, they told us we, we owned into the woods. Um, shortly after, we were notified by the school to move a shed that was existing. Um, so we thought we lost a little more, and now we lost even, we lost even more than that, so we're really, um... Really would like to extend our property, and... The two people to the right of us, which is Butch and Pat and Jackie Street. Um, I think they're on board as far as wanting to purchase also. Mike Stefan and myself, there's two property owners between us. If they would not be willing to purchase to make a straight line, we would be willing to meet halfway so that we could keep it as a, a straight line. So, um, we've talked to Mike Stefan about that. So there's basically two people that we know of that we don't know if they would be interested or not. But we definitely would buy more if we could have the opportunity to, to purchase. Just anything to put a little shed back there, anything, a little garden. We just, we really don't have much room, as you can see, and if, if anybody would do anything with that land, it would be bumping right, right to our backyard, and, you know, we wouldn't have much privacy. And I plan to be there my, pretty much my whole life, I don't have any intentions to leave there, so I'd appreciate it very much if you would consider selling that to us again, okay? Thank you very much.
Lynn, do you wanna stay up there a second, please?
Sure.
We have a map in your blue folder. And it kind of outlines the property, you got the school owns, there's a blue line around it. If you look on the bottom, I don't know if Lynn's seen it, but she would know.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I did.
On the bottom, you can see the, um, there's like a big cloud, that's wetland. Okay, so, you can't do anything with that, basically. The, over on that very top left corner is what was owned and purchased, well, that's owned by Stefan's, I believe, right?
Yes.
Um, they had gotten a permit back in the day where they shouldn't have, they built the shed, found out that they were on school property. And the school, and Stefan's worked out a payment for them to pay, buy that extra land so they would be permitted. And now the rest of the owners, I believe, Mrs. Casper's heard, heard from another owner that's interested, right?
Lynn, can you please tell me the two names that you just said that you have talked to already?
Jackie Street, she's here tonight.
Jack, okay, thank you, 'cause I'm like, I said letters, so I just need to know.
And Butch and Pat Josie.
Okay.
That would mean over Josie.
They're both the one side of us, so in between us and Mike Stefan are two other, um... I don't know their name, I don't know the ones' last name next to us, but, but like I said, we would be willing, Mike Stefan and us, we would be willing to, but, you know, halfway, and... Cause Mike would like actual land also, if they aren't interested.
So basically, you can see what we have in front of us here, um, I know one of our concerns was, what Lynn just mentioned, is we did, like, the third house buys. Fourth one doesn't, the third, fifth one does, and then we have a big jigsaw puzzle out there. So I know that was a concern. Um, does anybody have any questions for Lynn, because we're not gonna vote on it tonight, we'll probably bring it back next month. However, this is your chance to ask her questions, or, if there's any comments, or, anything like that, we'll talk about it some more as a Board, but...
And I did give that picture, that kind of explains a little bit, you can kinda see in there what we're dealing with, so...
Do you know Lynn, or anybody on the Board know, um, now, obviously it's adding to your own parcel, but to buy land behind somebody else's parcel, in a small, that small of a parcel, can you even do it?
Can I, could I?
No, could, could somebody buy, that's, could it be a separate parcel?
Mike was allowed to when we did it.
Huh?
I was on the Board when we did this, Mike was allowed.
But the two that are, the, the two that we don't know, them are, you know, them are small parcels that aren't connecting to your own land.
Well, just, just so the Board knows, the one guy already hauled all the dirt out of there, he put it in his yard. He had his tractor and bucket and everything back there, he took it out of the school property, that was just done. I actually saw pictures of it, the guy was in there working hauling stuff out and putting it in his backyard.
So, um, what Gary's asking though is, um, I believe they can, I don't know that for sure, it's probably something you wanna check with the city, or the village?
If we didn't own...
Can you own a parcel that's small right behind somebody else's house?
Right.
I guess if we didn't though, I mean, somebody else could own, could buy that other, if you sold...
But, but we don't know that, because you know, there's a different zoning, and every town has different zoning, how much land you can actually...
Yeah, you may wanna just double check with the village.
And, and we are willing, like, I know Mike is willing to buy more if you, you know, if you bumped it even back further.
The reason, the reason that we have the angle that we have on there, as a Board, and we bought that when we did this. We offered it to all the people that lived there, and we, we okayed Mike's, cause he had a building there already. But, if nobody else bought, if everybody didn't buy down the road, to keep that line straight, we weren't gonna do it, and that's why it's like that.
Do, do we know what the dimensions are, what you want, what you want?
I don't, and, and, see, that's, that was one thing I wanted to bring up, because if you are going to have it surveyed, I'm, because I believe you're, cause that was in that letter, that you're gonna, you're...
We're just doing it unofficial, we're doing our own thing.
But, but if you were going to have somebody in there that if you maybe would wanna do separate parcel pieces also, I, and, and that would be up to you too, how much you would wanna sell to us.
How much of that is surveyed right now, when you said you had your property, you knew your dad had yours surveyed?
Yeah, it was surveyed last year.
Was it, is the whole area surveyed, or you guys just did your lot line?
We just did our lot.
And I'm sure Stefan's has his done, because...
And we don't know what the dimensions were at Stefan's lot, huh?
I, I do, I had, I didn't bring them with me.
Okay.
Yep, we have all that on file.
That is on file, okay.
We have all that, cause it happened back in two thousand and three.
So you, you need to find out then if, hoping of a parcel...
We have to work and all of that, we needed to find out the interest, because we went back and looked at stuff from two thousand and three, that's when that transaction happened with the land, which is many years ago, like you said. Um, there's so much paperwork there, and deeds there, and a whole bunch of stuff in there, um, with agreements, and again, as Dennis mentioned in there, they talked about wanting to keep a straight line, they didn't want it looking like a puzzle piece.
Right, and, and, and yes, and we would be willing, well, it, it wouldn't necessarily be a small parcel if it was connected onto ours though.
Yeah.
Right, cause we, we would be, if he wasn't willing to buy it, we'd be adding, um, to the parcel that you're...
Yeah, I, I just know that different zoning in different areas is so much different, and it's changed, I'm sure since Stefan bought it, so I mean, we need to know, even if we can sell it to a small piece like that, I think.
And are you, are you proposing to go, Gary's right, different, you gotta get that straight, and I'll make sure it's clear, because...
We gotta look.
There's a lot of differences.
So we need to find out.
Check with the town.
How it's zoned and how big a parcel, if you can do that.
Okay.
Or if you, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Talk to them about different ideas that you might have.
Okay.
Um, also, are you looking to go to the very end of the property, or are you looking to go, go through the last house? You can look at one of our maps if you wanna see that.
I'm Dave Lindwell, husband.
I do.
Jackie's interested by the piece behind her, Butch is interested by the piece behind him. Brian, I don't remember his last name, lives next to us, if he don't want his, we wanna buy behind him and us.
Okay.
Mike Stefan will buy behind Florian's house and his section, if that's making you do it.
Okay.
I can check with Kim and the, the village.
You're saying they'll haul far back up to the football field, and that would be...
No, how far, to the end.
To the end.
Oh, to the very end.
Towards the dump, you talking about?
Yeah, down here, all the way down.
Dave, like you know, we're talking about the other night.
Oh, yeah, if, if, if that's offered to us, I'm sure we each would look into that, depend, you know, depending on what...
Towards the end of the lot.
You're talking towards the football field?
Yeah.
No, no.
Or are you talking towards the, the dump?
To the dump.
Towards the dump.
You're talking along here, but it's all the way down here.
Jackie is, let's say that I mean Jackie's, but you're talking, coming straight to this land, all the way down here.
All the way down here.
Oh, this piece here?
Yes.
You're going past Jackie's house.
We're trying to keep it straight, is what we're trying to do.
Well, that would be up to Jackie if she wants it, that they are chunked up there, because it would be kinda dumb for us to buy on the other side of the person.
Okay, just kinda...
Do, do you wanna look there, and, yeah, Jackie?
We can explain it, yeah. I can check with the village with Kim and see what the zoning is, and she can check with the county.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're just trying to look at what you guys are looking for, as a Board, what we're kinda concerned about, and then we'll, we'll bring it back next month, probably.
Okay, and we'll find out, I'll do a beginning.
She said whatever the price was, you know, if it's a decent price, she would be willing.
Alright, alright, Mr. Butch, any other questions?
I know, uh, we talked with Dennis the other night, going towards the football field. Mike had by, I think, sixty-nine feet back.
So it's sixty-nine, okay.
Sixty-nine by three hundred, which is with his lot. And we were kinda looking, Mike kinda measured off where we kinda thought would be nice. So when you come in football field, right to the right, that woods goes down like this, makes a draw, and like that again, we were thinking, if you guys would be willing... From the back of Mike's lot would be another eighty feet, and that would bring us five, ten feet into the woods to the right of the, the drive of that football.
Mike's marked it, didn't he?
Yeah, he has those sticks there. But that would be, I mean, we would be willing, that would be eighty feet off the back his, and then probably be a hundred and fifty feet off the back ours.
Okay.
If we're willing to work with whatever you want.
For the right price, whatever you guys wanna do, we're willing to work with that.
Sounds good, guys.
We need everybody still wanting that same amount of, of feet, because we wanna keep a straight line, so everybody would have to...
Yeah, if you wanna go straight, but, yeah. Being on the village Board, I'll check with Kim and see what the zoning part of it is.
There you go.
We'll go, she can find out, and I can let you guys know probably next week sometime.
Yeah, you know, I'll look at if we had one parcel versus a bunch of small parcels behind the house, and, you know, I'll check in all that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, thanks. Alright, is there any other public input for tonight? Is there a second call for any public input? Third call, public input? Alright, we'll move on to district reports, which is, uh, number six, letter A, district spotlight.
I have Ms. Dixon here. I have Mrs. Dixon here to recognize a student tonight from the FPLA regarding her advancement to nationals, so I'm gonna let her take it over from here.
Good evening. On April twelfth, Surin FPLA participated in the virtual state FPLA conference. We were at the village hall for the day, they allowed us to use their community education room, so I had seventeen students, myself, and Mrs. Hishy came over for part of the day. And we participated in the virtual conference. Seventeen students attended, sixteen competed previously to that, all of the competition this year was virtual, all the test taking was virtual, all the workshops were virtual, everything. It was an interesting experience, to say the least. We had a very good day as far as competition went at the state level. Um, first of all, our chapter was recognized as fourth in the state for, um, market share award, and what that means is based on our school population, we had the fourth largest membership in our school. We were probably in over twenty percent somewhere, we have twenty-nine members in our chapter out of approximately under twenty-five students in the school. So that earned us a state buck in addition there. And then we had two students placed in the top eight competition in their events. Leo Taylor was eighth in accounting one, and Macy Reed finished fifth in Help Desk. Finished by finishing fifth, she finished as the alternate in her event, but, um, as kids signed up to go on national competition, two people backed out of her event, so she now has the opportunity to compete in national competition this summer. So again, virtual, we don't get to travel anywhere, but she will be competing, um, in early June, she'll take the first part of her test, and I will let her explain what her event is all about to you.
Okay. So, the national FPLA description for Help Desk is having an understanding of and the ability to provide technical assistance to end users. At the regional level, I competed in a one-hundred question objective test that had to be completed in sixty minutes. This was a test on my knowledge of technical support, and at the state level, I competed in another objective test and a role play activity based on customer service and tech, in the technical support field. The role play part of this event consists of an open exchange between the competitor and the judges throughout the presentation. My scenario was helping a customer get a new printer to work within a computer, and at the national level, I would be competing, or I would be taking an objective test, and the top ten from that event will then have to do a role play activity.
Any questions for you there?
Very nice, um, any questions? Um, I might be able to use you at the county, miss. Because we have a Help Desk person, so I, that's a very good topic, and there's a lot of jobs out there for it, so, thank you. Any questions or comments, otherwise, congratulations.
I'd like to commend Becky also, they do a lot to make that possible, you guys do a great job.
Yeah, thank you Becky, and Becky's going to be retiring, so...
Yes.
She's gonna be missed, definitely. Thanks, guys. Alright, Buildings and Grounds report.
Troy and Greg are going to be presenting together this evening.
Good evening, uh, Greg put me on point, but obviously, he's here, he's vested in everything we're gonna talk about tonight, so any questions can be directed to either one of us. So, a couple things on our list that we've been working on, um, as a group, uh, the concession stand and the grounds remodel over at the athletic field. Um, we're working on redoing the ticket booth, the bathroom building, a couple things to the track shed, and also some updates to the concession stand. We are going to begin to unofficially mark the land between the athletic field and the properties that were discussed previously, so, um, I guess I think that's been pretty well discussed already, but that was, you know, why that letter was for, so that we... So, um, I guess I think that's been pretty well discussed already, but that was, you know, why that letter was for, um, so that we'll be out there unofficially trying to get some, some boundaries. We have approved Ethan Lally and Mason Garrigan for summer helpers at, uh, ten weeks, um, thirty-two hours a week. Uh, we've also been busy preparing for graduation inside and outside the building. On our docket for approval tonight, um, I'm gonna present to you, um, some things that we had, uh, got some prices on for, um, I'll talk about first door replacements. Uh, on the outside of exterior doors four, five, six, nine and ten, and a shop door that does not exist currently to go between the two shops back there. And, um, most, mostly needed because of how our floor's set up back there, just to put it simply, um, it would be, um, very convenient to have that.
Where are those doors, four, six, nine and ten?
Uh, okay, so four is over by kindergarten, it's got the double glass in it. Five is right here, that is where we can get a lot of our food service, uh, deliveries and so on, and it's the exit to the dumpsters. Six is right here, it's the triple doors.
Alright.
And then nine and ten are both shops, uh, uh, back there, um, and pretty well in need.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we got prices from HJ Martin, Quality Door and La Force. And we are recommending La Force to install these prefinished doors, um, for a price not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, it might be inaccurate in your packet and I'll take the blame for that, um, but I wanna make sure you note that correction, uh, from the amount of dollars. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Not so far, no.
La Force is the one that put our doors in, for example, over by my office, that's a company we've been working with to put in new doors. So it just recognizes the same company that we've been working with, um, this is an example of one of the doors that's been replaced.
And, and they're, you said in need of replacement?
Yes, I mean, the, the frames are rotting, the doors are rusting, yes.
And.
These doors do not have any overhangs, uh, they are right out there, so when you step out here, it's right there, so anytime it is salted, um, they're twenty plus years old, so, yes. And they can extreme, in fact, uh, door four, because we do use a lot of salt out by the dumpsters. Um, we've actually cut the bottoms out, we've had bottoms fabricated and they've lasted for seven, ten years or any one. They are definitely in need of, we're just getting a lot more done that, uh, we're planning on, which is needed.
Cosmetically similar?
Yes.
Absolutely. You know, and some of them don't close properly, which is a security concern, um, if you don't know about it, you may not laugh and, um, you know, we can, we can Band-Aids solutions on those things, um, but I think over time that costs us, so.
Our Band-Aids are too deep bottom of the doors because they're rusted, bowed out and so they close, that is our Band-Aids.
That's him, I don't do that.
Alright, any questions about the doors, they're recommending LA Force, so, um.
And just so you know, that's on our five-year plan also, so that, there's a couple of doors that were supposed to be replaced this year and a couple of doors next year, we're just combining both, both sets, I'm, I'm calling it sets, but two different sets of doors. So if you look at our five-year plan under building and grounds, you will see those door numbers also. So if you're wondering where that's coming from, that's where it's coming from. Five-year plan is the white tab. There's a green sheet of paper in there. And I call them mullions and that's not correct, so, um, if you look under twenty, twenty-one, you'll see mullions replaced, doors four and five. And then if you go to twenty-one, twenty-two, you'll see doors six, nine and ten, so you should see that that's been on our five-year plan.
Alright, any questions, if not, let's move on.
Additionally to, sorry, just to throw this in here, the how metal industry is facing, uh, price increases like very, very soon, so, um, just something to think about and I'm hearing ten percent. So, um, at this point, we're safe, but if we put it off, I'm just saying we may incur those extra costs.
Okay, thank you.
Um, second on our list, uh, looking for approval for track, uh, pulverizing the track and repainting. Um, we've had, uh, several people out, we've got three estimates, um, as you can see, they're listed for you, uh, in your packet. And, um, we are recommending paid black asphalt to do an asphalt pulverization and overlay, uh, for a price not to exceed one hundred, um, twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty dollars.
Um, I had asked this earlier, Greg, you might remember, when was the last time we actually pulverized the track?
Uh, since I've been here.
Somebody said twenty years maybe?
Twenty, I have some letters, but a little bit less than twenty years, been a little bit, been known since I've been here.
Pulverized?
Pulverized.
No, we have sealed the top, we have repainted, it has not been pulverized since I have started here, it's twenty-two years.
Okay, maybe that was longer than that, but he says it's been pulverized once.
Must've been before Greg started.
And he's not making a right now, we're.
Um, in your packet?
Yeah.
Number six?
Number six.
Six?
And, um.
And it also has been brought up to our attention again today, uh, by some community that would like to see a rubberized track. We could not just lay rubberized over what we have right now.
No, no.
Our surface is all breaking up and we need a good base before we would do something like that. And our track also continually, we just, this break glass fall somewhere in there, we had a big sinkhole. And we would not be able to repair a rubberized surface like we can with asphalt. I did look years ago what we could do to make this foolproof so it doesn't sink. And things that I have heard by engineers is we do a U-shaped concrete underneath that going down below. And they said at that time below the cross line, but we get down below three, four feet, we have water here, so. I personally, I, I would love to see a rubberized track.
So.
I just don't, I, I don't, we would have to do more engineering to do that, but.
So, the way I understand it, the rubberized track, I know it's more expensive.
We're looking at from these seventy percent to one hundred percent higher than the numbers that were given us today.
Cause I was, I was, um, I guess back in the day, like ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, we talked about this. Um, they were talking about, you know, you gotta take three feet out and you gotta like gravel down and then you gotta redo the base underneath the track, um, to do whatever. But if it's been twenty years that we've, or twenty plus years that we've pulverized it, um, if you have a, a sway in the track, can you replace rubber on a rubberized track?
I don't think so.
Because if you can.
Not easily, um, you would have to cut the rubber out, you would have to lay asphalt underneath that. And then you would have to respray, so is it possible, yes, I think that anything is possible.
Yeah, so I don't know, um, I guess, um, we'll talk more about that later, but, yeah, I mean, based on our previous discussions, it was a lot more expensive. But I, I did receive a call where somebody was trying to see if they could, um, if we consider a rubber track. And, um, we'll just, I mean, that person's not here right now, so we'll just kinda move on with what you're recommending and we'll deal with it at that time, in the, on the agenda.
The company we're recommending is a local company, um, out of, uh, Patleton. And, um, if, if you went and looked at the track, you could see why we're talking about this now.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
They're offering a three-year warranty, they will be WIA certified, uh, the track will be when they're complete. And they are the only company that will, uh, paint the stripes and the numbers and the markings and so on on the track when they're complete.
For a low bed.
For a low bed and the other companies did not offer that.
Um, Heidi, last time we resurfaced it and we painted it, didn't we have a problem?
Paint, the paint was not good, um, nothing, they're just in mid-nineties. We were an eight-way track and then we went to, we pulverized it and we went to nine lanes. So we could hold regionals and sectionals and stuff like that, so it was at mid-nineties and I know we did it because we added an extra lane.
Yeah, there's more.
So, yeah, I thought the paint job was poor last time, after the first year, there was big chunks that.
Oh, we gotta take a look at what the surface was.
Yeah.
It was all fished and.
I mean, you're, we're gonna be dealing with a brand new surface here, so.
Alright, just wanna make sure.
And that would be under warranty also for the three years, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
The striping and everything.
They can meet the summer timeframe, this group is available also.
Okay.
And we have not heard of this, uh, a black before. Uh, the others, we have heard about, uh, we've met with all of these people and we're very impressed. Uh, the guy that came on, he has twenty years' experience, he was working with an asphalt company that he really likes to work for, so. Sometimes the, the low beds are, are scary, but we like to pay black.
Yeah, we might have more to work, person that worked down the line or something, right?
I just wanna make you aware, and I said that in my memo to you, we didn't have that on the docket till the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, when we look at the five-year plan. I just wanna make you all aware of that, we're looking at moving that up, um, just because of where we're at and, and, and I'm extremely concerned about the safety of our children running on that track.
Uh, Mr. Blanchard, did you say that, that they do fit in, uh, this summer timeline?
They do, yes. And we all know what kill prices are going to right now, um, so, uh, that will obviously have a direct impact on, on these companies and their prices too.
Okay, any other questions, it is pretty bad, track is pretty bad.
And I'm hoping you ask questions now, cause I don't have it underneath discussions, I think it's silly, we're talking about it now, I never put it under discussions. So the next time you're gonna see it is gonna be matters requiring board action, so now's your time to be asking any questions you have, please, because I just didn't, I wasn't redundant in three different places with it.
Okay. Alright, continue on.
Lastly, sorry to take so much of your time, um, as part of our, uh, summer work, you've, uh, already approved our flooring and our, uh, tables that we're gonna be, uh, putting in the cafeteria and our lockers. And to make everything come together, we've gotten some pricing on doing some painting in the hallways, because it just makes a lot of sense, especially with everything coming out, the prep work is less. The, um, the concerns about anything being damaged, doesn't matter because it's gonna be all new when we get done, so now is the time to paint, um, and get all of our hallways to come together and blend with the new floors, lockers and cafeteria. Um, so we got three prices for a lot of square footage, I didn't put the square foot numbers in, in your packet, but, um, it's a lot. And, uh, so, um, all local companies and we are recommending, um, Mike's Home Maintenance, Alina, for an amount not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
And just so you know, the burgundy that's in the hallways right now, because they won't match, oh. Can you go get the flooring, please, samples in my office, Greg?
You said, are they all with it?
No, we brought them up.
You took all my off?
All the flooring's now.
Please, I forgot those, could you do that? Sorry.
Please.
Okay.
You're the only one that has a key.
Yeah, can I just?
Hurry up.
Oh, or do you want Joy to go, Greg, you wanna stay?
Greg.
I just know he has a key.
Do you want, do you wanna stay with Troy, you want me to run?
I can run, no, that's fine.
You don't have to run.
I just made a key in my office, so, sorry Troy, just.
Oh, it's okay, cause I'm, I think, um.
The burgundy, so what I'm, I guess where I was going, my, you see our source, our floor samples, they're really nice, I'm excited about them. Um, we don't wanna have burgundy walls with purple and gold, so, um, we wanna do something with it and, and I knew to replace those, that type of, it would cost a substantial amount of money. So Troy went out and kinda contacted a different painters and they tried primers, is that right?
Primer first, yeah.
Primer first, and I'm not just talking a little bit about what they were.
Well, sure, because it's like a laminate countertop type service, um, you know, you're like, it's your comfort at home, things don't maybe wanna stick to them and you don't want it to. Um, but then, so in this case, we want it to stick, so we're using a special primer, I can't tell you what that's made of, um, but then, um, going over that with two coats of epoxy paint. Um, we had some samples done for us, um, by a couple different vendors, we brought it in here, we tried to vandalize it, mark on it and clean it. And, um, I'm pretty impressed with the different, um, vendors and what they brought us, um, and all consistently came pretty clean. So you're taking a product that may be, um, an eyesore and, you know, wondering if we can, it's a lot less money to paint than to replace, I can tell you that.
Especially right now.
A lot, so, um, you know, we, we may have maintenance from time to time, but just like everything else, we, we touch it up and, and we go, but I think it'll look sharp and with what Greg's grabbing and bringing in here to tie it all together with the walls will be pretty cool.
What, what about the, um, military tribute thing, are you doing anything with that or are you holding off on that?
No, we, we are, um, Mr. Christensen had me put something out on Facebook and he's got people contacting him. So we, we haven't sat, we've measured it, we've talked about it, I, I believe between Mike and Troy, we're, we're going to build it within the home, uh, within the building here. Um, we're not gonna look at a different vendor, cause I had thought about maybe diversify, but Greg thinks that we should do it ourselves, so we're gonna go with that in, in the, this middle section of the lockers. Guess it's the easiest way to tell you where it's going to be at, kinda where we talked about when I was there, so that middle section will have a section in the center, which will be basically displaying our students' work. And then on the, both on the other sides, three from each of the different services on both sides of it, with the uniform and the, and the hat, the jacket and the hat in there on both sides. A kind of an educational piece for our students and obviously a reflection for our veterans.
Okay.
Well, he lays out real quick, I did put the scoreboard in your packet, you approved it last month, I told you, I think at that time we had eighteen of the sponsor panels sold, they're now completely sold. Um, Stratford Sign Company has that, they called today, they're on the artwork, um, we'll be seeing that soon and that new board will be up over there, um, in June.
Very nice.
And I think it's gonna be really sharp over there come football season.
Good job. I wanna say, you know, thanks, we, with these, um, giving us so many bids, it's really, I know it takes more time and it's pain, but we appreciate it. So, go ahead, Greg, the flooring?
We looked at trying to break up the, the high school, the elementary and the cafeteria. Things we looked at were the quarter inch and the eighth inch. So what we, and what we have, we are looking at for the high school to do some of the purple. So you're not coming from elementary with purple and going to high school to purple. We're looking to add a little bit of gold to the elementary side. And then we are looking at, no, we looked at the small cafeteria. And again, to make a little bit of a difference, we want with the smaller flake for the cafeteria. Yeah, that'll pound on that, so we will leave, um, again, high school, cafeteria and elementary. We are join, going to add a little bit of purple, a stripe in the high school, just to give it some color so we're not just blase. I tried to get teal, but I was told no. We are doing actually some walls, I know I'm being a turd. We are doing some walls in the elementary that will match this yellow to brighten things up a little bit. Even though all of our flooring still has grays and blacks and purples and yellows, uh, so that's what we had, um, do you want me to?
Just pass them around, you'll see.
Just pass them around.
So what, you're, you're gonna see there's three of the same colors in all three of them and just in the high school side, there's gonna be purple and on the elementary side is gold. So the only thing, and, and again, thanks to Katie Cagle helping us with this, she spent time with Troy, I and Greg working on this. And then Troy has in his hand, just so you can see, that's gonna be what our tables, a, a few of our tables in our cafeteria, that's the design, so it's gonna have the gold and the purple and then the three colors that we just.
And there's, there are two tables on the bottom, if you have to look kinda really close, cause even Kelly didn't notice that. But there is an eagle in the background and, and that's the one we're, that, the table we chose, at no extra. We'll bring them all to you. So these are the colors that we have going in the cafeteria. Maybe this one with the little, yes.
Can you talk, you know, Wayne's worried about the cleaning. Could you talk a little bit about the cleaning, because it's got that, you know, it feels a little different. You know what I mean? Can you talk about the cleaning of the floors? Are you concerned about that?
Um, it should, we're gonna be able to do more with our floor scrubbers. Um, kinda a little bit of a texture, just to reduce any slip ring, a slip ring, I don't think that's a word. Slipping of, uh, we were out in numerous places, and we did not hear any cleaning issues with this epoxy. And I also want to add that we really did a good job on doing the flooring, because that next week, thirty percent increase on epoxies. Thirty percent. So we got it in just in time, otherwise it would've been super, super expensive.
Um, so I got a question, um, as far as getting the O floor off, is that all part of this, or?
Yes.
That's a good thing. So we gotta tear the tile out? You're not going with the top, right?
Everything goes down to concrete, everything is sanded, cleaned, and there is, uh, a flooring company that will be doing that.
Thank you.
For Troy.
And that was, we, we talked about that's removal and, and disposal also, right?
That's everything, yes, it is.
That's what I thought when you talked before.
Everything, yes.
Are there any questions for these guys in regards to what they've, um, presented? You guys don't have anything else, right?
Nope.
Everything? It's going to come up to a vote later, so if there's any questions, let us know.
Again, just an awareness, and Troy talked about this earlier. They are spending time out at the football field fixing things up. For example, there will be new in the fall, there will be a new ticket booth that is safe, that our people will be inside. The concession stand is going to have some, a little bit of remodeling inside with a nice counter. And then the outside's going to be, um, soffit on?
Res, soffit, resided, new doors, new roll-up doors just here. Yep, new locks on everything over there.
And our crew is doing all that work?
Yep.
Yep, and then at the track, on the tr, I call it the track storage, there's an entrance door, that door is gonna be replaced. And we're looking at probably doing something, hopefully maybe, if we're not sure yet, with the bathrooms, we're investigating that right now to see, it's called a milkboard.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's, it's fiberglass FRP panel, but, yeah, milkboard's like a common. You see them in freezers, coolers, at farms, things like that, milk houses.
But that's just, we're talking about that.
Okay. Yeah, I saw you guys have the cement. You ready to pour cement out there at the ticket booth, maybe?
Yeah, Mike, Mike got that ready today. I, I gave me a shovel, and I helped him a little bit, and, um, yeah, so, we got it.
Okay, any other questions? We're gonna move on here. We have a lot more to discuss. If not, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to the transportation report. You should have that in your blue folder, everybody.
Yeah, we always get it late, so you're always gonna have it in your blue folder. That's just, that's just the timing that we have. Um, you can see there with transportation where we're at, um, in regards to our expenditures. And, um, I don't know if you have any questions or not. We all know what's happening with gas prices, so I don't need to talk about that. Um, recognizing where we're at with our mileage and our costs. Yeah, we, we should be okay, so I don't...
Closer than we thought.
Yeah, yep.
Any questions about the transportation report? Uh, I think we were doing real well at one time, but now gas is up to two eighty-four a gallon, so I care about that, or more. All right, if there's nothing else on transportation, letter C, we'll move to letter D, principals' report.
Ms. Berg is here.
Is that you I see running on Festival Brook Road?
That's me. That's me. I'm hard to miss in my hot pink.
Yeah.
My husband calls them, "Don't get squished clothes." So first, I'm gonna talk a little bit about prom. Um, we had about a hundred and twenty students at our twenty-twenty-one prom, and it was, it was super awesome. Um, we had about twenty guests from other schools. They were very excited to be here. Um, we did have both a junior and a senior grand march. It was really just all in all a fantastic night. Special thanks to Mrs. Williams, Mr. Bedrowski, Mrs. Horverson-Baber, and, uh, Ms. Brancheck for their time and their energy making that event a reality. It was, it was pretty nice. Um, staff wellness for April, we did kind of a fun activity where, um, there were probably, I don't know, sixty different things that you could choose from, and all you had to do was try a different activity each day for the month. And it was everything from exercise to watching a fish tank to making yourself some herbal tea. And we were really pleasantly surprised. Uh, Mr. L came to me all excited because thirty-two staff members participated in that wellness challenge. So that was pretty great. Um, we had some really nice, um, insulated mugs that we had purchased from a grant that Mr. L and I had written together, um, and then also some gift cards from our wellness fund. You can see, we actually do have some, some pre, I feel, some pre-encouraging summer school registrations. We have seven children in, they're getting ready for kindergarten, six in the entering four K. We have approximately thirty students, um, that are going to be in grades one through six, so students that were in fifth grade through fifth grade this year. Twenty-four in junior high boot camp, and we have maybe a dozen students at the high school level. We're still solidifying that. So that's pretty exciting. Those are very exciting numbers, and, and I shared with you last month what those summer school programs would look like. The different things that have been keeping us busy, of course, are...
Mrs. Berg, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is the transportation helping with the summer school evening?
So maybe, um, I'm gonna say maybe, would you say a third of the students that are subject to transportation, Mrs. Pendle? There are going to be, we did learn that there are going to be four buses to Mountain and to Suring. Um, so I, I guess I'm not sure, probably.
Okay.
Yes. I, I think that, um, I think that a lot of parents have responded really favorably to the three-week style and to knowing that it's kind of an academic focus, and maybe that's just the year that we're in. But I'm, I'm very, very excited by it. Mrs. Pendle and I have had a couple of different meetings today. We talked about the theme from small people to elementary, and, um, we have some pretty excited, energetic teachers ready to, to get after it. Um, I'm just excited to make s'mores because it's everything. Um, so we've been busy with our spring sports, which have been really awesome, interviewing to fill some open positions, which Mrs. Caster's gonna talk about a little bit later on. Of course, we're all wrapping up our educator effectiveness, planning for the summer renovations, all of the spring testing, which I'm sure Mrs. Pendle will share with you. Um, our scallop scholarship committee met and chose the recipients, and that's always a, a super fun and exciting time where you get together and celebrate the accomplishments of our seniors. And we are also planning our spring evacuation drill. If you look down below, you can see, of course, my report was due last week. So when I talked about an upcoming event of our middle school, high school awards, that, of course, happened today. We had maybe fifty, sixty parents who came to join us, which was fantastic, considering it's during the day. We gave out some great awards to, uh, both middle school and high school students. I will report on that next month. I didn't want people to get a peek at that before I gave those awards, so that's why those recipients weren't listed here. We have an elementary concert in the park happening. Um, we also have our, um, spring slash, it's almost summer picnic that's going to happen through our print service program. So we're super excited by a lot of the things that are going on in school right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Berg. Athletic report?
All right. Um, general, um, I have a WIA meeting. I'm attending Point on the twenty-sixth. That's the annual meeting, and that is also the day I'll be receiving the scholar athlete awards. Um, and we present those today at the awards banquet. Um, girls' track team is doing very well. They won the Gillett Girls Invite, and they just won the Okonok County Meet.
Congratulations, saw that.
Boys, for the five that I started out with, and now I have six, and I'll have seven by a week from now, uh, they're holding their own and doing very well. Um, our softball team is doing well. Uh, we are transporting, we are using a van to transport them to Gillett. And I beg people on a daily basis to, and you know what? I got people that will work for me, so it's kinda nice. Um, so they're transported, uh, they've won a couple games.
How many kids in softball?
We are, we, we have eight. They have less than us. So that is a first.
Yeah.
Um, but we're losing a lot of seniors, but, you know, I've got some eighth graders that are gonna probably come in and play softball, so. Baseball, we won. We got a game. Um, they're doing well. I, you were talking, and there is, there's another one where we've got like loving kids, and Gillett has one or two. And we've got kids who haven't played baseball before, and they're doing okay. I, I mean, the catcher that caught the other night has only caught for a couple games, and, I mean, he's learning. And now with this pitch count that you have to count your pitches, and when you only have Taren as the pitcher, and they're pulling Ethan, and they're pulling Keegan with pitching, and they're doing the best they can. But they seem to be having, and we take the ten-passenger van over there every single night, too. And that's something that I keep track of on my computer, and then I give Amy a count of what we spend, and that's then sent to Gillett. Um, speaking of our co-ops, we did have a meeting, um, with Gillett Superintendent and Athletic Director, Kelly and myself. And we decided that, um, wrestling, I will take over the wrestling program, and it's gonna be housed in Suring. And I listed, we're gonna be responsible for everything. I kinda asked them, "Hey, when it comes to hiring, do you wanna be a part of it?" And they basically said, "No, you're taking it over. You do that, and then when it's softball and baseball, we'll do that over there." The only thing that we said about baseball and softball is because it, there is a head coach and assistant coach, I would kinda like, in the future, as coaches are new, I wouldn't mind one from this school and one from the other. Because a lot of times they'll pick us up to go to an away game, and then they go pick Gillett up. Well, then they drop us off and leave our kids here unsupervised, and I don't know if they have rights and stuff like that. And I think that's an area of concern that we don't have supervision. So we're looking into that. Um, I just finalized and ordered the track record board. It's gonna take four to six weeks to get here, and so that should be put up this summer. Um, the banner, the thousand-point banner is all up to date and is hung in the large gym. And we're hosting the conference track meet in Okonok Falls on the in-service day after school, or is out. And that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for?
I got a few, no? Um, now, when we get the track refinished, I'm assuming that we will be hosting in Suring, like conference track meet?
Well, the only thing is, we go to Okonok Falls because they have a rubberized track.
Yep, yep, understand that.
So...
Is it something we'll consider? Because that's a pretty big event to bring to Suring.
That's a pretty big event to go to Suring, um, but Jerry, all he wants is the concessions.
Yeah.
We get all of the gate receipts and everything. Um, we started going there when, I wanna say, left later, it was maybe second to last year, because it's another chance to run on a rubberized surface for our kids. And that's why we chose to do that.
Okay. Um, so she's not answering you here? No.
So would, would we have it?
Personally, I would like, personally...
I mean, I would, I would personally like to go rubberized. I mean, it's, especially since you'd pretty much go conference, regional, sectional.
Yeah. Personally, and, and having experience with track and track, pretty good track athletes, um, as boys, personally, I would rather see it come to Suring for a conference meet. That's, you're bringing stuff into the village, people into the village of...
And I think if I...
If we have a new track, we should be able to...
If I propose that and decide, no, we weren't going to do that. I mean, I just check with Jerry every year, and he says, "Yes, I'll put you on my calendar." Um, if it's something that... But you also, the conference track meet, they've been kinda spoiled because Greg and myself have taken over the conference track meet and have run it. I can't remember unless somebody else ran it. And then it is mobile, so you start with whoever's after Suring, that's where it moves, and then it moves every single year. But we have an advantage where, I guess it's like this, and the last person that, you know, they don't, they don't wanna run it. Not everybody has workers like we have at our school. We run a really great meet. I, I mean, we ran invitationals that were done in like two hours, two and a half hours this year. I mean, they don't wanna run it, they don't have the workers, they don't wanna do the work. It's a lot of work doing this.
I know when I clerked it for many years, I know that, I don't know how many compliments we got because of the workers at Suring, the efficiency at Suring. You know, they couldn't believe it'd be done, you know, at dark or before dark, where years of conference meet you other places, you're into halfway into the night because of the efficiency. And I guess I just would like spending the money on the track. I guess I would like to at least be considered.
Yep. And what I would do is if, if you said, "No, Heidi, we don't want you to go to River, River Falls." If you don't wanna go to Okonok Falls anymore, I would go and, in the athletic director's meeting, and say, "You know what? My board said, 'No, I can't host it. I can't go there anymore.' That I gotta put it on my own track." And then I would say, "Okay, do you still want me to run this every year, or do we keep, do we go round?" Because Niagara just got a new track, you know, there's this rubber.
But like you said, a lot of them do not wanna run it.
A lot of them don't. I mean, I'm sure, that's just like when it comes to making up the track schedule. They all look at me and say, "Heidi, will you do it?" It's just like, so...
Okay. Suring definitely gets a lot of compliments on their track program.
This probably should be a text to you, but, but being you're here, I'm gonna ask it. Is there a site for results for like the bigger track meets that you can look at? 'Cause I'm always searching for results.
It depends on where, it depends on where...
And what timing is...
What we run and what they use.
Yeah.
So whenever you come to my track, we have the high tech. And I go through athletic.net, which is free. And Amanda uses to say, "Well, we've never done a meet," but that's where she enters her cross-country. Athletic.net, and if you go in, and you can go right down to, like, the regional, which our regional right now is a three-leg regional, and it'll list all the schools, and it'll give you the top ten people running each event right now. So, but that means after every single track meet, I come home, I come in here, and I go and I upload results and do all that kinda stuff. And the people that I've worked with that do athletic.net do a pretty good job. Now, the county meet, Lon used athletic.net, and he entered it as we went, but it didn't... My kids' stuff, or the stuff from Okonok County, didn't upload as far as changing their PRs or anything.
Okay.
I got the results from it, it, the results were on it, but they weren't shared with the whole bin of... Now, we go to Hilbert, and Hilbert used PT Timing. And then you have to go onto PT Timing and look for results, and you gotta look for the date that it was.
Last question, I promise. Um, you said that Suring's gonna be taking over the wrestling?
Yes.
Does that mean the practices will all be held here, too?
Yes.
So how is that gonna work out with us having two gyms, then having three gyms?
Well, we basically took it, we basically took them over this year. We basically had both the junior high and the high school wrestling programs here.
And they practice right after?
I had the junior high practice in the hall over there, which was called Nancy Morsted's Hall. And then the high school was practicing in the cafeteria.
Okay.
And we didn't have any problems.
Good.
And I mean, I even encouraged them to practice together because I think, because we did have low numbers. I mean, I only had three in the high school, and they were all from Suring. It's still more people, and, you know, at least you can practice holds on people and stuff like that, whatever they do, but...
It's crazy, three wrestlers from two schools, isn't it?
Yeah. It's really sad.
Isn't it?
Well, you look at the baseball program, how long ago baseball, they wanted us because they just needed a token, three or four that we could give them, and now we're begging for them to come.
Yeah.
And we did agree that the contracts for the co-ops would be fifty-fifty down the middle, so...
Heidi, can I ask you a question about the rubberized track? Are those gonna be presented tonight? Did they decide not to?
Well, she talked to me, and she said, "No matter what, the guy that they, they were talking to, no matter what, this track has to be fixed." So no matter what, you have to have that baby ground... So no matter what, you have to have that baby ground down and you have to have a new track put on. Because they take the rubberized and put it on top of the track then.
Yep.
And what they do is depending on how thick you want your rubberization, is, is your cost. So once you get this track down, if they wanted to come and say, okay, we've got these people, they, they fundraised eighty thousand dollars, we could pay for it to put on top of it.
Cause that's what they had mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, so then they can do that, as long as they're paying for the lines. You know, the lines are already part of the deal. Um, but every, they said every ten, some people stretch it to fourteen, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have to like do a it might need another fourth layer or something like that, and there's a cost to that and that they would present to you. So.
I was just curious as to where all that was at, so.
Yeah, and you know, if, if we did something like this, that's something like, you make lots of money. I mean, I asked Rochelle, I mean, between the shirts and the concessions and the pay to get in and the programs, you make a lot of money. And maybe if we did something like that, we took the, I mean, he, he said five to six thousand at the gate they made. Just at a sectional. You take that money and you put it in an account and ten years, you take that money that's there and then maybe that helps you re- rubberize.
And I wasn't known to be a track athlete or anything, but typically what happens is sectionals, they want it on a rubber track, right? So they get the.
Regionals and sectionals. That's why we used to host regionals and we went to O'Connell Falls and we would run that.
Okay.
But now Three Lakes, we did a brand new rubberized surface up there and that's why Three Lakes has it right now.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted the board to hear everything about that.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Heidi, can you just talk about the volunteer we have for middle school track or can you not talk about that at all?
The volunteer? Mickey?
You have anything to say?
No.
I just had to bring it up.
That's great, I mean, we do have somebody who has volunteered. Uh, we do have somebody also that is filling out papers that is going to help volunteer at the baseball. Um, Heather Thompson's husband would like to. And, um, no, it's, um, Mickey's school and she comes and she's pretty much there four nights out of the, the week and does a great job. And they're, they're showing up on Wednesdays, my junior high track coaches are showing up on Wednesdays and basically that's really kinda nice because the kids that don't have church and they can come, they can, if they wanna come, they can come. But it separates and we usually do specialty and it lets the coaches separate a little bit more to get more one-on-one. I mean, I've always got a jump coach. Now I've lost my high jump coach and so now I'm going over here and Pete's kinda taking over in the sand. So it's just kinda nice. Anybody that's volunteered for us always does such a great job.
Appreciate that, I know.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for Heidi? All right, thanks Heidi, appreciate it. Okay, CISA eight report. CISA eight report.
I don't have anything to report, except that I'm looking forward to my last meeting next week.
Are you gonna take Dave with you?
It's virtual, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Dave.
Maybe you wanna send.
I don't know, I don't know how that's gonna work. Dave had something else going on, some interview with some other schools, so if he's taking a break in between to come online, then it'll be interesting, I'm sure, but. Um, yeah, so we'll be having our annual meeting, that's usually the place. The second week in June, I meant, then Surry is off before we control, so we don't have to go to any meetings for two years.
Perfect.
Right. I know, now, now I'm done, right?
Do you send something, do you send something into them to let them know that Dave's the rep of Surry?
He'll send me something in the call.
I just said, that's just what you're saying.
Oh, and I just sign that.
Yeah, that's right. That's something that I could sign, I could sign, I could sign that, yep.
All right, we'll go to number seven, discussion items, COVID matrix plan and graduation, number one.
Okay, so just a, a few things regards to COVID. Um, you have in your blue folder a letter I received just hot off the cross from Mr. Evers regarding COVID trends in children and youth. That is literally, I got it this afternoon, right before the meeting, so I printed that out. Joy has it in your folder, I'm asking that you look at that, you're seeing some trends going on with that. Um, I wanna just make you aware of a few things here. Um, you're aware of graduation, cause you get a letter from me from last week, a copy of the letter that was sent out. In regards to music performances, our middle, our middle school and high school performances are going to be virtual. Our elementary is going to be held out in the band shell and this is due to timing. Also, the twenty-sixth is the elementary, I just want you to know that's a change in the schedule and the date, according to what we had before. Also, because, um, Wayne kinda forgot me in administrative reports, I just wanna thank Pam Burke for her hard work. We just had our awards ceremony today and it went great. I also just wanna mention that we are going to be recognizing staff at a retirement party and all of you have been invited to that. Mrs. Ruggen has sent that to you, so those were the two items I wanted to mention, I'll keep that aside. Um, regards to, uh, regards to field trips, we are allowing small groups to go different places if they are by themselves. So for example, Ms. Williams, our art teacher, is going to go to a, um, an art exhibit in Green Bay and it is just gonna be our students at that art, art exhibit. Uh, we've got Mr. Garrigan taking kids to a camp up north and it's just gonna be our kids. So we're slowly letting kids go, but it's our group just there going to these field trips, so you should be aware of that. Um, in regards to open gym, I've had several people, basically coaches, asking me, what does it look like for summer for having an opportunity to use the gym and/or the weight room or cardio room? And I guess, you know, um, we haven't really talked about summer with our students. We talked a little bit about our community and, and waiting till the end of the year here, so I think that's something that we should discuss and what that looks like. I, I did share with Mr. Taylor, he asked me in person, and Ms. Crushby, you know, what does that look like? And my, and my only hiccup is, cause I don't know how this is all gonna fly, but in June, we're pulling lockers out and it's down that hallway. And then we're gonna be putting new lockers in. And then the first part of July, I know that first week in July around the fifth, we're having the floor, um, redone in the, not totally redone, but finish on it and, and some paint fixed on the lines in the high school gym. And then we're gonna have the flooring company coming in. And I just, I really don't know how this is all going to work, what the hallways are gonna be like and the entrance to get into those areas. So, um, that, that is my only comment. So those were the, those are the key, key things that have been coming up in conversations in regards to COVID. And I should also make you aware that we do have one case of COVID and we've got two others who are at this time basically in close contact, they're quarantined.
Not seniors?
No. And I did talk with, um, the Jill superintendent and being a parent of a COVID student, I, I do know there's cases taking place in other school districts and there's quarantining going on, so just an awareness on that. I don't know, questions you have, I'd like to have a conversation, what your thoughts are in regards to using our facility for open gym, so I can give some direction to some of my staff.
Okay, let's, um, let's go back to the beginning of your report, which was graduation. Is there any discussion in regards to graduation? At this time?
I, I shared my concern, the book, how the graduation protocol, and I'd prefer to discuss most of that in a closed session.
Okay. All right, what about, um, Mrs. Casper asked, she's concerned about, she needs some kinda direction on the, um, open gym and the the, um, facilities, you know, with the COVID restrictions and stuff. Um, last month, we voted to lift the mask mandate. Um, I thought we had mentioned to lift it for everything, but I don't know, I mean, what does the rest of the board think? And what are your, what are the concerns that you're running into? With the, is it the public wanting to use the facilities?
That was my question last month, was the public, I had people from the public, it was nothing internal, it was just the public. And now I'm kinda seeking some input as we, we approach to the end of May here, early June, where we had it with the public with the facilities? And what are your thoughts with our students using the facilities in the summer? Those are the two questions I am coming out of this with.
All right, does anybody have any comments on that?
My thoughts are if we're gonna, you know, I think we should open it up to some degree and just follow the same types of protocols that we would during the school year. Whatever we have in place is what we would continue to follow through with.
For the public as well?
I would think so, yeah.
I agree with you, we've, we've got, I mean, this is, this is also their school.
Yeah, I think we have the public in the building today.
What does everybody else think? Uh, you have a supervisor, right?
No, at this point, I don't know. I haven't hired anybody, cause I knew, I didn't know what the direction we're going, so I'll have conversations.
So what was the schedule before COVID? Was it two days a week, three days a week? I, I think it was three days, wasn't it?
In the summer or during the school year?
In the summer.
Okay, in the summer, actually it was run through our summer school pro, program and it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and it was for two hours. And it was when we had other summer school things going on.
And, and you're talking there, students, not public?
That is correct, yeah, that is correct.
But when did you have it open for the public?
For the public, we had it prior to COVID, during the school year, what we had it was, we had it open after school for two hours.
Every day?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And we paid somebody to do that.
And they were limited to, limited to a certain area?
Yes, they were, they weight roomed and then at the time we had our cardio up on the stage. Wait a minute, we've moved the cardio since that time, they haven't been here since then, which is right across, across the hallway. But Ms. Strillo has shared, we are going to have monitors so you can, cameras so that if you're a supervisor and you're in the weight room, you can see what's going on in the cardio and vice versa, so that the supervision, because it's two separate rooms now. And she shared that last month with you.
So that will still be, the two hours after school will be students and public?
I haven't opened it up to anybody.
No, I mean, I mean, that's, that's what it was in the past, the students and the public.
Yep, yep.
For that two hours. But they were not, the public was not allowed in the gym with student athletes?
We've never had anyone asked to use that, Mr. Regal. We've always just had the weight room, we have a group of people who like to weight lift and we, we have a group of people who'd like to use the cardio stuff.
Yeah, my thoughts were, and I'm thinking back, when I coached, I mean, we had, we had alumni come back and in the gym and play basketball against the, the student athletes. And I mean, that was, uh, it, my opinion, and, and was a big part of our success. So I don't know if that's something, if we can intermingle, obviously it's a different thing. Um, you have close contact for basketball that you would not have in the cardio or the weight, weight. And I'm pretty sure that probably will come up. Um, if we're gonna open it up, are we gonna allow, is Chris or Mitch gonna allow alumni to come in and scrimmage against? Against, um, current players, could you current student athletes?
You can't require people to have a vaccination, right?
No. We do not wanna get into that.
Yeah. And I think that's where Mrs. Casper's stuck, she's trying to figure out what, what, what direction do we wanna head here with this?
And also the timing.
Is it something that we wanna wait longer to allow that, that's the?
I don't know what the answers are, cause I just don't wanna tell people we're gonna be open Monday through Thursday from four thirty to six and then all of a sudden Greg comes to me and says, hey, I gotta shut down that hallway. I'm get, I call it the senior, senior hallway right now because we gotta pull lockers out and then put new lockers in. And then two weeks later, we're, we're having the guys come in and pull the flooring out. I don't know how this, how this is all gonna work, to be honest with you.
There's really too much going on to be having people milling around. We don't know, you know, you don't know what's gonna be happening from one day to the next, what stage they're gonna be in, yeah, so.
I mean, we've talked about that, Greg.
The only other thing is, and, and I'm looking at the other side of it, do we punish our student athletes because we're doing remodeling? I mean, it, it may take a little bit of effort saying that, okay, for these two weeks, this is off limits, this entrance, or we can use this entrance to get in in the next two weeks, cause you know, we're, we're here for the students. You know, and, and I don't wanna punish them because we're doing construction in certain types of the building.
This, this area we're sitting in tonight, I think is our safest place because the kids could come in, you know, right here and use this facility. So this, because even if we're doing the cafeteria, we'll just put caution tape and say, please do not enter. You know, this, this area, I think we're safe. I'm just, I just don't know how this is all going to go and my goal is not to hurt anybody with this, just try to be smart because I'd hate to have a parent drop a kid off. I'm saying we have an open gym Monday through Thursday from whatever time and then I have to close down because I can't get him down that hallway.
What we did last year was, it was only students and alumni.
No.
Yeah, we let kids that were in college come back and play.
That's it, yep.
That's all we did last year, we didn't allow public, so.
Yeah, but like Mrs. Casper said, I think that's a great idea, we have that entrance here, you know, and, and really the only time that cardio and that, that weight room are not accessible is when we're working on this hallway right here, correct?
And you'll know more about the schedule as you get further along.
Yeah, yeah, well, the hall, yes.
I mean, it may take, it may take creative planning, but we got creative people. So I mean, it's, you know, I just don't wanna punish our student athletes because we're.
But Gary, what are you saying? Are you saying just our students and college students or are you saying everybody? Cause that's really the question that she's, she has trouble answering right now. How many calls are you getting from the public?
Not very many. If I have five, that's, that's, it's the same people who are diehards, you know, the people that do use the facility and, and you know, I wanna get them back here, but you know, I've shared the same thing I'm sharing with you right now. The board first has to approve it, but I just wanna let you know there might be where I have to say to you, sorry, I said open, but, and they understood. They're like, Kelly, we get that, I mean, they were real good about it, so, um.
Back to everybody or just students and college students?
That's your question, my question.
That's really what it comes down to. We're gonna, we're probably gonna say, yeah, open it up to kids for sure. But it really comes down to whether or not we're gonna open them to the public, she's getting a few calls. I'm, I look at it from like what Gary's saying, when he was coaching alumni basketball and all, if you're gonna build a basketball program, you wanna get those alumni in here to work with those kids. I'm not sure it's, it's there right now, but that's what needs to happen. Maybe we should just, um, give it a couple of months and let these projects get out of the way before we start bringing the public back in here. Focus on the kids and the college kids, I don't know. Or we could just open it wide open, it might be two alumni, two people that come from the community.
Because if we limit the college, we're eliminating the senior walkers, the kids, the, those seniors that wanna, right? I mean, then we're eliminating them.
Yeah, you really are, you really are, so.
There is no easy solution.
I don't think you're gonna have a lot of public, cause I think a lot of them if, are gonna stay home anyway till they.
I think a lot of them are used to staying home and the ones that fear, there's, there's.
Might do too.
Well, no, the ones that came were, um, are, are vaccinated, they're, they're older. So whether or not this.
They don't go anywhere, anywhere right now.
That's, yeah, that's kinda what we're saying, I doubt they.
Very limited, they'll let go.
All right, anybody else?
Is this something we're deciding tonight or is this discussion only or?
She needs.
I need some direction, so I can let people know.
I think, I think we should open it up and just.
And that's gonna be underneath, matters requiring board action.
Yeah, and I guess the big thing is, is if you start running into any kinda COVID issues, if you don't understand, we'll lock her down, you know? Right?
Well, Kelly's got that authority to do that.
Yep, Kelly has authority to do that. Okay, well, we're gonna vote on it later, so you guys can vote how you want. Is there any other discussion on that? No, all right, we'll go to the next one. Uh, summer school update?
Just with summer stu, school, you have a copy of your blue folder, just looking at how things are gonna happen. Ms. Berg already talked about numbers, so I'm not gonna go there with numbers, but just kinda looking at how staff are gonna be covering different areas and how we're gonna be moving students and what they're gonna be getting. And then you also have a copy on the, on that blue sheet of, of basically what we're offering other than the academics, which is going to be the swim lessons and things of that nature. So I don't know if you have any questions on that. Um, I'm gonna contact the bus garage, I wasn't aware of the four buses, I think that's a little ridiculous because I'm paying for four drivers besides, so that was something shared with Ms. Berg, not with me. And I'm sure it's because I asked too many questions, so she just thinks if she can get four people out there, I, I just have concerns with that, especially when we're only looking at a third and when you add up the numbers of students that are going to be participating, when you look at the numbers Ms. Berg gave you. There's sixty students and a third of them, that's twenty, uh, to run four buses between twenty and thirty kids seems really ridiculous.
Probably the distance and how long.
You didn't say she would be sending rocks.
Yeah.
At a later time.
Yeah, and I, I know it's.
Cause you could be on the bus for two hours if, if spread all over the place.
So we'll have to look at. So we'll have to look at that. I just wanna look, I don't want to be paying for something that we don't necessarily need to
And if there's some way out distance, are vans a possibility or not?
That's what I'm gonna look at, yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at that. I wasn't aware, because I spoke with her, you know, I said I want to be smart, when I talked to her about wanting transportation.
Mrs. Berg did share, the numbers look pretty decent for summer school, right?
I, I think they're, they're not above what we've been doing. Um, when you start adding up, we did it differently, which was more enrichment. Now, it's academic, so I think that's really good that they're coming for academic before we looked at enrichment, so I, I, I'm pleased with that.
With all the stuff that's happened, academics is pretty important.
And, and if I could ask Mrs. Berg, you said that, um, this is still open numbers, yet people can still enroll? And is that something that, in the past, that you have, when it gets closer, you know, it's, I'm a chronic procrastinator, you know? When it gets closer to, do, um, do you have more kids enroll? Or not really?
Well, that one I'm not sure about with summer school. I'm also not positive that every family who needs busing has accurately reported that they need busing, and if they do need staff, then I can actually count, because I have that kind of data.
Okay.
They could drop out too late.
Right.
Of course, old ways, I'm sure.
But I mean, it's kind of, if, if you can't
I was guessing, it's twenty, one of the students in that first section, um, in that academic piece. Plus two high school kids, and our number, um, I, I have some thought, I don't know, but I think you have thirty, forty, fifty. But that's, that's looking at, oh, no, there's even more on the middle school. It probably will sort of cut out, but we could set these. I would count, and I would raise my hand, and you can acknowledge our comments after calling inside of the busing.
Okay, I, I don't have any more on summer school at this time. You do see what, who's, who's teaching. I, I will have coming up though for summer school. We did not board approve it. I talked last month about what we were going to pay staff for summer school. It was not board approved, so you'll see that back in our, underneath manager requiring board action. You need to go through officially and approve the dollar amounts. Twenty-five for academic, twenty-one's for the activities and athletics, and then supervising the weight room and the cardio area was fifteen dollars.
And we certainly appreciate every, all the teachers and staff that are helping out with summer school.
Very much so.
All right, long-term sub pay?
Uh, let's go to summer hours. Just want to let you know, summer hours are gonna be from seven to four thirty, Monday through Thursday. Closed on Fridays. Um, I'm looking at the possibility of starting the week right after we're done, but I just want to make sure everything is set for summer school before I say that, so, um, I'm looking at that, and then I'm looking at, um, going in through August, like we have, when the ladies come back from the student office, we go back to full week, so that would be my plan.
Okay, if I were to, the doctor, please, this will maybe be back to five days for the summer, because we are going to be going six days a week with doctors. So I don't know exactly, I just, I don't want to put everybody on Thursday, and then I'm sure I can, I have my work from Saturdays and Sundays. So we may be going back to five days a week.
Got a lot of
Alternating also on weekends, because we do have, as you know, a lot going on.
Yeah.
So I guess we just
Five of sixty-seven children request for busing.
Okay.
Right, but I'm, all I do is count by the thirty-five or sixty-seven.
So seven to four-thirties, from what date to what date?
But in a sense, that some of them are gonna be seven, so they're going to the same moment.
That's not bad, thirty-five is, nobody more.
So it may start, I don't know until I look at summer school. It may start the second week in June, which is the seventh, which would be the eleventh. Can you ask me the date? Or it may not start till the eighteenth, depending on where we're at. And then in Ju, in August, we're coming back. And usually I bring the high school and elementary secretaries back two weeks before in-service, which is the twenty-third. They're coming back on the ninth.
Okay, so till early August. And then back to five days, right?
That is correct.
Okay, any questions on summer hours? If not, let's go to long-term sub pay?
Hey, long-term sub, this is something that, um, Amy Hermsen brought to my attention. We have increased our pay for daily for our, um, it's a hundred and ten dollars is what we pay for our subs daily, and when somebody subs a long-term sub, we had it at a hundred and thirty, and if you look at the sheet, you're given number nine, what other schools are paying for their long-term subs. We haven't changed. She said she, that has been the dollar amount since she can remember, so that's been a long time. And I guess I would just like to have us reevaluate that. When I did an average, looking at all the schools that you have there, the average was a hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. And I guess my recommendation would be, when we have someone putting in the time that they are in regards to subbing, that I would move it up to a hundred and fifty dollars.
I would agree.
What do we consider long-term? Ten days?
Over, over, yep, consistent.
Over ten or fifteen?
Ten, and then it's, and then it's over those days.
We're gonna vote on that later?
Yep, that's just a conversation, yep.
No, I know, that's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any question about?
Do you, do you back, you don't back pay for the first ten days, then, do you?
No, no, we just pick it up after that point. So if we have somebody on a long-term disability, or we have somebody on a, um, maternity leave, you know, so after those, after, you don't go back and repay them those first ten days.
Okay.
You can get up after.
So what if somebody subs fifteen days in a year, and they're spread out all throughout the area?
No, that's
Consecutive?
Yes, that's correct. And that's language in our policies.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Amanda?
Nope.
Anybody else? All right, let's go to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, breakfast, lunch?
Okay, breakfast and lunch. So we just received, Emily received an email from DPI letting us know that breakfast and lunch will again be through, next year will be called the Seamless Summer Option, which meant we didn't pay for breakfast and lunch. So then I got a, she got another email from another person from DPI saying we had to pick between breakfast, lunch, and snack, for it to be free, you can pick two out of the three. But then she went back and she got clarification, because we've always had the free snack program here since I've been here. And I don't know if it was prior to my time or not, or just because the after-school program came in, and she found out is that the MSLP, which I don't know what that acronym stands for, um, is off, is going to offer, actually, um, we would be able to have our snack free through that, and SSO, which is Seamless Summer Options, we could have our breakfast and lunch. So we'll be able to provide breakfast, lunch, and snack free next year to our students. I have one concern, and my concern is we get a lot of grants through our poverty level, and last year, sorry, beginning of this year, we didn't have people fill out free and reduce, free and reduced paperwork. And I know Joy has made a comment, a lot of people have direct cert, so that paperwork is already going through. I just don't know how this is going to affect us as we move forward with this, with our poverty, because again, if you remember, a couple of years ago, Ms. Berg had to do a drive, I call it a drive, to get our, our free and reduced numbers where they were supposed to be. They were under that, they were under that threshold of fifty, let's just say fifty percent. So I'm a little worried about that, but I'll continue to ask questions and see if I get any direction on that, because that, that, I don't know how this and it's not gonna just affect us, it's gonna affect everybody, obviously, but that is a concern.
Clarification of, of all this, we'll be tracked.
Yeah.
So that, you're gonna bring that back then, probably?
Well, I'm letting you know breakfast and lunch, but I'm gonna let you know when I know what they're gonna do for looking at, like I said, that paperwork for pro, poverty, free, reduced lunch paperwork. And we may have our, our people just do that, those that are direct serve, if there is somebody just to help with us.
Okay, so keep it simple. Are they getting free breakfast and lunch this year?
Next coming school year, yes. They already are this year.
This year, yeah, and next year.
And next year?
Yep.
Okay.
She, she's concerned with
I, I understand, recouping money when it's not free anymore, because free and reduced lunch, right?
No, no, no. It, it has to do with, um, certain grants are based on your number of free and reduced students, your low-income students, okay? And when you're not filling that paperwork out, you have no way to track that. You have what's called direct cert, and those are the, the families that are on they, they get Medicaid, or they get food stamps, or, or whatever, and so there, that's a drug cert, and that says you are low-income, you are there. But you have families that don't have that, but they're still low-income, that would count towards that. So that can affect our title funds. Those grant funds and other grant funds that are out there, it, 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 um, it affects our E-rate numbers. You know, our percentage of E-rate, and so it will affect those grant funds we get. It affects a lot of things, and so there needs to be clarification of how are they now gonna base those numbers so that we still get the, the, um, the free and reduce that we need, that percentage that we need to get those grant funds.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions on breakfast, lunch? If not, football, track property. We discussed that earlier, do we need to discuss it any further? If not, let's move forward to letter G, staff drug testing.
I'm just bringing that up, because that was something that, some time ago, we had a committee that was looking at policies. And at this point, we don't have drug testing for our new employees. Um, we have something in there that if we have concern in our policies of somebody that we think is under the influence, we had, we have the right to have them drug tested, but we don't have protocol that, for example, myself, when I was hired, I was never drug tested. Um, we, that has not been a practice of this district to ever have anyone that I'm aware of, that I'm aware of. Again, I didn't go through everybody's personnel file to see if any drug testing was done, and, and we brought that up, and I'm just bringing it back up. The reason why I'm bringing it back up is, is if we're gonna move forward with that, I need to let my staff know, and I need to update, I also need to update our staff handbooks.
So we passed the policy already, right? And that was in it?
We did not accept that, no, if you remember.
Oh, we didn't accept.
No, we did not accept that. We wanted to revisit it. That's why bringing this back to you. We did not, we did not check that, because we thought there should be discussion and a conversation. That's why I'm bringing it back.
What does everybody think? What does it cost to do a drug test? What's the process? Do you send them to the hospital?
That's generally the process.
What does it cost the school and? I kind of think it's a good idea for them to have these people teaching your children and stuff, they should
And, and most places of employment now require a drug test when you're, when you're hired.
That's where Andy works at.
Yeah.
If you are tested positive, if you are tested positive, you pick up the cost also. If you're tested positive, you pick up the cost then. You lose the school picking up the cost to get it done.
How do you make the person pick up the cost if you don't hire them because they tested positive?
They gotta, they gotta pay for the drug test then. It goes on their bill if they're test, if they're tested positive. And that's even if it's a teacher that works for you, and you decide to send them in for a drug test. Same thing, I mean, I'm just saying, that's where he works at. You pay the cost if you're tested positive on drug testing.
You already have it in the policy where if you suspect there's an issue, abuse?
We do have that, we do have that in there.
So this is for new employees?
And if we wanted to change that, like Dennis said, if you test positive, we would have to change that in the policies then.
Right, 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 but we don't have any, uh, new employees.
Yeah.
You know, when you're hiring
We don't have practice or protocols on that, so we're gonna change that. We just need to let people know we're going to change that, because you were, you were surprised when I said that to you.
Yeah, I was, because I'm used to it being done.
So, um, this is a discussion phase right now, so?
That's correct.
Is this something?
It's gonna come back, it's gonna come back next month, and I wanted you to think about it, because we haven't been talking about it. I just want you to think about it. I can, I can contact and find out what a cost is for drug tests. I personally do not know what that is.
I think it'd be nice just to know, but I don't know if it's gonna change anything.
When I worked at Wagner's, when we had to get tested, we either got tested Jill, or I get tested over here at the left belt clinic.
Okay.
When I worked at Wagner's, Don, you're, you're in a
Well, you're driving, you're driving a, a gas truck too.
Well, yeah, but Don didn't get a choice.
Yeah.
They called him, and they said you will have him there by nine o'clock the next morning.
All right, so that's on the, um, that'll be on the agenda for next month to approve or disapprove, uh, standard drug testing for new employees. So think about it, we'll have more discussion next month. Uh, we'll go to number eight, manager requiring board action first. We have COVID.
And the only matter we're looking at is open gyms, facilities during the summer.
Okay. So we discussed this already, is, um, I think, from what I understood, was we're going to open it up. Just no restrictions.
I agree.
And we feel that the public that was, a lot of the public that was coming in, that they probably will be hesitant to come back, only because they don't want to take any chances right now.
I know two of them that did, that were doing it, they don't go anywhere.
Yeah. Um, if it becomes an issue, I guess we could always revisit it, but does that make sense to everybody? If, if so, I mean, if not, speak up, if, or vote no, I guess.
So they'll be coming in at the same time as our regular open gym?
His regular open gym. That's what it was set at, right? So then you're going to have the public intermingled with the kids? That's what you're thinking, Amanda?
Yeah, I mean, on the other hand, if it's five people who are interested, showing interest in coming, that's if they come.
So if we basically, if we opened it up, that left wording in there, because we have about three things to consider, construction, any rise in COVID cases, or if all of a sudden fifty people want to show up, we should have some wording that it could be revisited on a regular basis to allow for that adjustment.
Right.
I agree with that.
The administr, administrators would have the right to do tomorrow if they needed to, right?
Correct.
Have to come back to the board or anything, it just
Correct, it just gotta be you.
Right.
Board needs to understand, because if she does do that, then you're probably gonna get a phone call.
Right.
Oh, well.
But you need to understand what the
Oh, I understand, yeah.
And, uh, support the administrator at that point, because that's something we agreed on. But I think that's a great idea. Add that to the, um, motion, so.
Yep.
All right, so the wording, motion by so, second by so, to approve
Opening facilities to the public.
Public.
I'm trying to be thr, huh?
During open gym hours?
During open gym hours. Um, this, this will be revisited, or can be revisited, due to COVID concerns.
Construction?
Construction.
Number of attendees.
And number of attendees.
Can be revisited for what?
COVID.
Construction, attendees.
COVID concerns.
Regarding COVID.
COVID, construction. Number of attendee concerns.
Participation.
Particip, participation. Yeah, participation. By administration. Otherwise, if you leave it that, that means we're revisiting it, if I don't add by administration.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second to approve opening facilities to the public during open gym hours, and can be revisited regard, in regards to COVID, construction, and participation by administration.
So moved.
Second by Pipcorn, or first by Pipcorn. Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lally, to approve opening facilities to the public during open gym hours. And can be revisited, the decision can be re, revisited regarding COVID, construction, and participation by our administration. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Rose, motion carried. Letter B, review, approve budget revisions.
Hey, I have to do, I, Amy does this for me. We need to do this to balance our budgets, so, so you will see, for example, when you look at number eleven, your document, we are going to see there is the amount that we, we budget, and remember, we build a budget, it's an estimated guess. And then how we're moving money, so what the difference is, you're gonna see the change over on the far right column. You're gonna see that basically in areas of expenditure, in areas of revenue, so I just want to bring that to your attention. I also want to bring to your attention, knowing what I know right now, which could change, we will have to go into our fund balances for two hundred thousand dollars, okay? We did, reason being, we didn't budget the lockers, folks. We did, reason being, we didn't budget the lockers, folks, okay, that was not built in. I did not build in the cafeteria having the floor done and then this lobby. So those are expenses, when you look at eighty thousand and the addition for floor, those are some expenses. You know, last year we put money into the fund balance, so um. Don't have that memorized, how much we put in, but just, just be aware that it's not going to be a balanced budget, we're gonna overspend. Because we've had some big projects and we've had to pay for some of those big projects out of this budget that we did not um, plan in our budgeting. So and and if we would have had to, we would have had to go into fund balance anyway, so.
So you can say fund balance and or referendum.
That is correct.
Because to me, I look at it more referendum because it was passed to support the operating.
But I have to go, but I have to go into our fund balance.
To get that, but there was.
Yeah, we're the money, I just need people to know that.
I just want clarification on it, because anybody's left there.
Projects that we decided we were going to go into fund balance.
That's correct, yeah, that's in our, in our plan.
Okay, very good.
But I just want to make you aware, so I don't know if you have any questions, you know, um.
That's all preliminary too.
And I, I want you to know a lot of it was moved into Greg, okay? Into Greg's area is where where I moved money, so if I had a little extra money somewhere. Or I think I'm guessing that I'm gonna have a little extra money, that's where I moved it, was into Greg's area because of all these projects. So this is what I have to share with you, I have to show you the changes from what we started out with with our previous to now what I'm amending with that change.
Okay, any questions on the budget revisions? Number eleven in your packet. If not, I need a motion, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Regal, is there a second?
A second. Cybert.
Cybert. Motion by Regal, seconded by Cybert to approve budget revisions as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried, review, approve long-term subpay, letter C.
We just talked about that.
We just, uh, we just, uh, the recommendation from our superintendent is to increase it from one thirty to one fifty after ten days.
I make the motion, we do that.
I'll second.
Motion by Pipcorn. Second by Lally. What is that effective then?
It'll be next school year, I'm not here to start it now, it'll start next school year.
Twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
That is correct.
Motion by Pipcorn, seconded by Lally to approve increasing long-term subpay to a hundred and fifty dollars per day. As discussed for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Letter D, review, approve painting hallways, classrooms and cafeteria.
That was all spoke about during our building and grounds conversation.
Yep.
He gave us a recommendation.
Yes, he did. Uh, the painting was.
Was that La Force?
Nope.
No, that's our meeting.
Go to your, go to page six in your packet, you're gonna find on the backside of that, that's for the painting.
Mike's home maintenance.
I make a motion to approve Mike's home maintenance for the painting of hallways, classrooms and cafeteria.
All right, we got a motion by Regal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pipcorn. To approve painting hallways, classrooms. And cafeteria by Mike's home maintenance not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred dollars as discussed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Let's go to letter E, review, approve purchase of doors.
It's gonna be on the front part of that, page six.
So that would be the.
La Force.
La Force.
That's the doors.
I make a motion, we do it.
All right, we got a motion from Pipcorn, and we do it.
I'll second.
Second by Woznick. To approve the purchase of doors from La Force Inc. of Green Bay for a price not to exceed twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars as recommended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, motions carried. Letter F, review, approve pulverizing laying of new track surface. Uh, the recommendation was paved black asphalt for a price not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty as a three-year warranty, includes striping.
The only comment I want to make is make you aware, I'm not gonna know until October what we get from state aid. And I remember that's where I get the formulas, the formula comes in, we get the revenue worksheet, which I want to remind you of. I just want you to know with this big project, yes, we have referendum money, but just recognize when we're doing that, we may have to use some fund balance for this also, okay? It's just that we want to get the project going, it's gonna be after July first, it's gonna be the twenty-one, twenty-two year. So I just want you to keep that in mind because again, not until October fifteenth am I gonna know the revenue worksheet and what our funding is going to be as a district. Because that's a substantial amount of money that makes me really nervous.
But it's still starting the project this, this summer.
Yep, we started July, after July. Yeah, I just want to make you aware of that, though.
Are there any other comments, if not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll move. Oops, oh, you got it, Gary got it.
Regal, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Lally. To approve pulverizing and laying new track surface by paved black asphalt ink of Appleton not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars as recommended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried, we'll note that the track hasn't been pulverized since the mid nineteen nineties and it's in terrible shape. So it's something um, we need to do for the safety of our, our kids and other kids from other school districts. All right, letter G, review, approve open enrollment applications.
Okay, you have that in your, in your, um, it's orange, it's orange in front of you in your folder. And I'm recommending to you to accept those students one, three, four, five, six, seven and eight to come in. And recommending students one and two to go out, you don't have names. I can share with you and you can see that on your orange sheet that there is a child that has been expelled and I'm recommending that we not pick him up.
I was gonna make the same recommendation.
That's my suggestion.
Okay, that's the recommendation of our superintendent, are there any questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Lundgren. To approve open enrolled applications one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for non-resident students to attend the Cern Public School District. In two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and to deny open enrollment, non-resident application number two as discussed, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, motions carried. All right, uh, the next one would be the um, to approve open enrolled applications one and two for resident students to attend non-resident districts. We just talked about that on the bottom of the orange sheet, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Woznick, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Cybert. To approve open enrolled applications number one and two for resident districts, resident students to attend non-resident districts in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. So there's two students that will have put in to go to a school other than Cern. All right, um, letter H, review, approve resignation of paraprofessional.
Okay, you have that, that's gonna be grade sheets, we have some personnel things and you've got copies of those letters that are gonna be graded or stapled together for you. The first one is Barb Garant, um, wow, she's been here a long time, so she's gonna be sadly missed. She's a paraprofessional for our district.
Yeah, Barb's been here a long time, she's a, she's a local and um, she definitely deserves a good retirement, but she did put in her resignation, so I need approval.
So moved.
Motion by Lally.
Second.
Second by Pipcorn. To approve the resignation of Barb Garrett, paraprofessional for her retirement as of June third, two thousand twenty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Review, approve resignation of Building Grounds employee.
This is another applicant resignation, thirty-five years here in our district, she's gonna be sadly missed in the Building and Grounds area. Karen Christensen, she's looking at wanting to retire on August sixth. She wants to help Greg and his crew out in the summer, which I appreciate her help.
It's a long time, thirty-five years. All right, I need a motion to approve her resignation.
So moved.
Motion by Pipcorn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we send a card or a letter to both of them thanking them for their time of service?
Seconded by Lally to approve the resignation of Karen Christensen, Building and and Grounds for her retirement as of August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, motions carried.
Sorry, Wayne.
No, but Dennis asked.
Yeah, I should.
Oh, okay.
You can?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, I'm sorry, Wayne, I didn't mean to jump in there.
All right, review, and we appreciate both those employees, obviously, the amount of time they put in here at Cern. Review, approve resignation of football assistant coach. All right, we have, who's the Cole Stillings?
Cole Stillings, and he's just looking at putting his energy in a different program and we've already talked about that, so I just made him. Do something official so that we can fill that position for Mr. Taylor this fall.
Do I have a motion to approve his resignation as assistant football coach?
So moved.
Motion by Lally, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Cybert. To approve the resignation of Cole Stillings as football assistant coach, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Review, approve summer technology help for two thousand twenty-one, there's Kate Mahoney, would be helping Laura Stralo. Uh, at a rate of seven dollars and fifty cents an hour for a total of a hundred and sixty hours, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Pipcorn, seconded by Woznick. To approve hiring Kate Mahoney as summer technology assistant position for two thousand twenty-one at seven fifteen hour for a total of a hundred and sixty hours as recommended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motions carried. Review, approve summer maintenance help for two thousand twenty-one, we have Ethan Lally and Mason Garrigan. For uh, seven hours and twenty-five cents per hour for a total of three hundred and twenty hours each.
And just in case you're wondering why there's a difference, Kate has served some time here already, so we always give them an increase with that time, so that's the minimum wage, so just, so you're aware of why. Just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there Woznick?
Second.
Second by Pipcorn. To approve hiring Ethan Lally and Mason Garrigan for two thousand twenty-one summer maintenance help at seven twenty-five an hour for a total of three hundred and twenty hours each, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I'll stay.
Six, oh and one.
Why, why is that? I, I thought that.
If Ethan, if Ethan can't make it or something, his dad said he'd fall.
Oh, Dad's gonna be here?
I'll take that way.
All right, review, approve, Hall of Fame recipient, has been moved into closed session, we'll bring letter M back in open session after closed session. Uh, let's go to letter N as a Nancy, review, approve summer help, summer staff, summer school pay, sorry.
I already talked about that, we talked about it last meeting, but I didn't have board approval, so I'm just asking for you to approve it tonight.
So what we're looking at doing is increasing the pay for summer school help to twenty-five dollars an hour for academic classes. Twenty-one dollars for athletic activity classes and fifteen dollars for weight room supervision, so I need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Motion by Lundgren.
Second.
Seconded by Pipcorn. To approve summer school pay off twenty-five dollars an hour for academic classes, twenty-one dollars an hour for athletic activity classes and fifteen dollars an hour for weight room supervision as recommended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried, letter O, second reading policies.
Can we just go back one second?
Yeah, yeah.
On our packet, we have another resignation, or is that not?
Not closed session.
Okay.
Closed session.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right, another curve ball. Second reading policies, volume thirty, number one.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Lundgren. Second by Woznick.
Do you guys want to go through them again?
No.
To approve the second reading of policies, volume thirty, number one as discussed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motions carried.
I guess we should have said if anybody had any concerns. No, okay, we're here.
Dale interrupted. Second reading of technical corrections, volume thirty, number one.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Lundgren.
Second.
Second by Woznick, the two people that are on the committee, they're reviews always. To approve the second reading of technical corrections, volume thirty, number one as discussed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Items for future board consideration, time and place of next meeting, next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and we're hoping to have it in the boardroom. But if that changes, it'll be on the agenda at five thirty P M. Items for future board consideration.
We have to come back, as you, as you know, we were, we were talking about. It's wrote down June, I better read exactly what I wrote down here. Um, someone help me out.
What do we have to?
They're coming back in June.
Oh, yeah, we just had, we just talked about the property.
The property.
Property is one thing and staff drug testing was the other, I had the property, but I'm like.
Property, drug testing.
What about our gathering? What we did with the survey, going through the survey.
We're supposed to go ice fishing.
Meet you out there.
So you're gonna talk about having some type of retreat or something we're talking about, so we can put that on our schedule.
Yep. It's a good one, Wendy.
And I kind of plugs in with what you shared with us this afternoon.
Yeah. Anything else for future board consideration? All right, unfinished business, graduation two thousand twenty-one.
I'm just looking for two members on the board to help hand out diplomas on graduation day. Um, and I put that in my memo to you already, and we're looking at that being on the twenty-second at one o'clock, hoping you could be here by twelve thirty.
I'm going to do it this year because I can, because it's on a different day, the White Lakes graduation, so I gotta jump on those.
Is anybody else interested in, it'd be nice to have two, two board members there.
Maybe Dave.
Do you notice, I'm gonna do, in the audience, I think.
Yes, I understand that, I've been there, done that.
Yeah.
Yep. You want to be with your family during that day and not up on stage.
Okay, I can, I can be there too.
I'm gonna be out of town.
I can be there.
How many you got?
But I'll make her back.
Two, I think two is gonna be fine.
Do you have two?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
You can put me down for backup, I think the band isn't playing and I'll have to bring my daughter anyways, so. If Wayne's got an ice fishing trip or something he needs to go to, well, still.
Some people, whether it's going, it could be.
Maybe.
No comment? All right, so uh, right now it's Kathy and Wayne and and then the backup would be Amanda. All right, we're, you'll have to have the final for the program and all that stuff, right?
That's why I need to know.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking now because that's, that's next weekend, not this weekend, the next weekend.
Next weekend, yeah.
All right, letter B, marking off site property lines awareness.
Just keeping it on there, the letter's been sent out to everybody, that's gonna be a work in progress, our goal is to get that done.
I, isn't it a waste of time? I mean, why don't we just?
So people know, so people know where the lines are, like she talked about, so she has an idea of where our line is. And then Greg and Troy talked about if we extended it to, you know, with, with Stephix, what it would look like, so they kind of know. Here's our line, this is what it would look like if you purchased the property, they talked about that and this is something that you've been asking the board to do. We are not paying surveyor to do this, this is unofficial, like I indicated in that letter.
No, they'll be paying the surveying cost plus the titling fee, I would imagine.
That is what we did in the past.
We gotta come up with a dollar amount.
There's a lot of things we need to look into before anything is determined. It's just a conversation.
And you know, do we want it to go straight all the way down?
And it does look like what four other properties have buildings already on our property?
Probably.
Two of them, the other ones are moved.
That map looked like there are four, I could be.
I think they're movable.
All the other ones are, but they're still on our property.
Yes, glorified Aisha.
Yeah.
But Stephix, in Stephix's case, it was a pretty permanent building, didn't it?
Yeah, it was his garage. Yeah, it was his garage.
His garage, yeah. But he got a permit. He assumed it was okay, you know, so. Alright, so, yeah, we're gonna try to make a decision on that next month, but there's a lot of stuff we have to.
I don't know if we'll be registered next month to make a decision. We'll have a conversation again, but I don't know if we'll have.
Do we want the property committee to meet before next month to look at some of that stuff?
I'm gonna be honest with you, between now and the end of the, that's the end of the school year, the timing is not of essence for me to get that done for the June meeting. I'm just gonna be honest, we've got graduation, we've got closure coming.
And if we gotta put it off another month, what's, I mean, it's been a year.
Well, whatever it is, we communicate to the people and then to let them.
Yeah.
But, you know, we can discuss things we know.
We have things to get ready to, that's gonna take a little time.
Yeah, true. Yeah, it's just communication.
Yeah.
It's a respect thing. Alright, and then letter C, CERN sign on Fergens property.
Just putting that on there. I know Troy had a company that was here, cause I talked, I've been working with Katie Kegel, I've been sharing with you. Um, he also had the company that's doing our football sign, kinda look at that and maybe give us an idea to what he thought it would cost for us to do something like that. So we got another vendor with a price too, so.
Does everybody know where that is? Okay. Ask questions if you're not sure. Alright, letter, was that eleven? Questions and comments from the public. Any other questions or comments from the public? Second call, third call? Alright, I need a motion to convene in a closed session.
Got unfinished business first, don't we?
So we just went through the.
Oh, did we? Okay.
I'll second.
Lundgren. Seconded by Lally. To convene in a closed session if approved by roll call of the board.
Yep.
Lundgren, yeah.
Pipcorn.
Yeah.
Regal.
Yeah.
Cybert.
Yes.
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 And it is seven thirty-nine?
Not midnight.